Okay, it's five o'clock. I'll call the order of the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
Fashin.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Here, thank you. Item three, meeting minutes not available. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Items for discussion and our possible action. A, oath of office and swearing in Jordan Coulson as patrol sergeant for the Oregon Police Department.
Yeah, so I just first want to share a little bit of information of how we got here. As you know, Lieutenant Niehaus was, we ran her process and she was ultimately selected. But as soon as that had happened, and I had met with the police commission, we started the sergeant process right away. Because we do want to get back up to full staff as soon as possible. So we started this process. The sergeant process is a little bit different than lieutenant. What it consists of is, you know, submitting a letter of interest, their resume, then they have to do that, what I call the PPQ. That's that long questionnaire ends up being ten-plus pages worth of answers they typically provide to us. Some of it's their qualifications, their education, but then also it gets more into the leadership. They give examples of different ways in which they lead in the department. So beyond that, then it's the, an interview with command staff and then a meeting with the police commission for their final approval. Excuse me. So we had three individuals submit interest for this, which was great. We're seeing this sort of interest with the lieutenant process and the sergeant process. It's just great. All three were just amazing candidates. Again, my decision was going to be a difficult one. We ran the process and Jordan came out ahead. So I did offer him the position and he gladly accepted. To give you a little bit of background on Jordan briefly, in January of two thousand and twenty-two is when we hired him. Fast forward as of today, he not only went through the academy, did well, went to field training, did very well, but he became one of our only two bicycle officers, which I would never want to become. The training is intense. I think he only walked away with maybe less than five injuries. You're going through rough terrain and it's just, it's intense. He then became a field training officer. He's already trained his very first officer. He's actually helping us out with a recruitment video, he and his wife. We really appreciate that. It's going to give a recruitment video, I think, that gives a very unique approach in that it's made by someone that works for our police department. That's very unique. Normally, police departments hire somebody to come in and do that, but he asked and I was like, absolutely. So we're looking forward to that product that I'll eventually bring to the board. I would say one of the main areas in which Jordan has led in our department has been our drone program. He is our lead. He's not supervisor. He wanted to take on that responsibility, though, and it takes on a lot of work. He's never complained. If anything, he's asked for more. We now have a program that I would put up against any program in Dane County. We go to a lot of calls because other agencies within this county know how good he has this program built up to be. We've helped find children. We've helped find adults. We've helped find people fleeing from crime scenes. So it's been very beneficial. All of that since two thousand and twenty-two. That's pretty amazing to accomplish all of that as a young officer. So it brings me nothing but joy to have him come up into the leadership and I get the chance to mentor him and teach him and see where he ends up in his career. It's going to be exciting. So that's Jordan in a nutshell from my perspective, and I'm happy to have him come up now and get sworn in. All right, we'll do it this way. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jordan T. Coulson, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
I, Jordan T. Coulson, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin, the charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin, the charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
And the law enforcement code of ethics, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as sergeant of the Oregon Police Department. I will sue my duties as of October first, two thousand and twenty-four.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department and the law enforcement code of ethics, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as sergeant of the Oregon Police Department. I will sue my duties October first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, item four B, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including the items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Have anyone here tonight for public comments? Seeing none. Without objection, I'm going to switch four C and four D and have the presentation from OCA Media first. So we will proceed with that presentation from OCA Media regarding the two thousand and twenty-five budget request and annual report of activities. You speak clearly into the mics, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Zwick, Director of OCA Media.
I'm Andy Wieland. I'm Vice President of the OCA Media Board.
Just, I wanted to give you a little background about OCA Media. It started in nineteen eighty-four. For those of you who don't know and weren't around, since then, I looked at some data on YouTube that, we started a YouTube channel in two thousand and fifteen, and in nine years, we went from sixteen subscribers to thirty-five hundred. Five hundred new subscribers came onboard in this past, this year to date, so in the last eight months, nine months. And then the lifetime of our channel, this is the only way we can get numbers. We don't have cable access numbers for our cable channels. So we use our YouTube numbers to get a clue as to what our viewership is. So we had twelve million impressions of our videos in the last, since we started our YouTube channel. Nine hundred thousand views of our videos. And in the past, past year, we streamed four hundred and twenty live streams in this town. We're not sure how we did that. We didn't get them all. We got a pretty good amount of them. And I'd like to note that we did that with four part-time employees running the place, with a handful of high school students who are live streaming and running camera for our events. So just get some perspective. We're not sure how we do that and it's wearing us out a little bit. Anyway, we create, OCA Media creates and shares enriching important video content, which makes a positive impact on the residents of our community. In, in two thousand and twenty-three, our YouTube channel and our social media platforms showed huge gains in both content and engagement. The impact in the community is not just live streaming, village and board of education meetings for our community to watch, but that provides transparency in government, which I think is extremely important. We provide an easy access source for local information through both our Facebook, social media, and YouTube channels, and our sports performing arts coverage, local event coverage. All impacts our viewership and our community. We produce two hundred and forty-five local videos, including our award-winning shows like Let's Talk Oregon, Tickets Please, and Oregon Life. We cover groundbreakings and business openings and definitely help out with the Chamber of Commerce and the impact that they make in this community. Health and safety impacts. We run PSAs on our channels that both, and on our social media, to let people know what's going on in town and keep them aware of the latest. We produce videos in concert with the Oregon Police Department and other organizations, providing safety. Like tomorrow, we're shooting a bus safety video for the school, with the school district and some drivers. Our student experience, our high school students are trained and hired and learn television production. A few of them go on into that industry. And graduates who enter college have a skill set that's applicable to many, into many businesses as far as they know how to stream, they know how to shoot video, they know how to light. We think that helps out a lot. It's also given them a first job, and I have pretty high standards for my employees. So I try not to let them get away with having a real easy first job. Our social media proof, like I said, eight hundred and something subscribers this past year, I'm sorry, five hundred, this is a two, two thousand and twenty-three, we gained eight hundred plus, and we had a hundred and eighty-five hours of video watched. Our social media, like I said, three hundred million, three million impressions in the past year. Most of that's due to Frank Caruso. He's our social media producer. He keeps a tab on everything going on in town and shares that information, and we have a pretty good following. Briefly summarizing, I think we provide an invaluable service to the residents of this community. We're in a unique position to share information and entertaining video content that no one else can here in town. Our demand for services continues to grow and so does our operating budget. So hopefully you can see, see it, that the three percent increase we're asking for this year is relatively small for what the amount that we're doing. And I'd just like to thank the board for its continued support. I'd like to thank village staff, our executive committee, and thank you for your time. Questions?
Thank you. Questions for Paul or Andy?
I guess I, I can speak to, I have a long history with OCA. I was, I was the one, one of the individuals who first hired Paul into OC Media. And, you know, the organization has turned substantially. And I know there's a lot of reasons why Oregon's an engage and involve community, but I think OCA is a big part of that and that we have this kind of information available to people in their living rooms and there's, at their convenience when they want to see it, when, however they want to see it. Paul's done an amazing job of taking an organization which was sort of abandoned, on a Band-Aid, on a Band-Aid, and he's rebuilt a lot of the equipment, has done a tremendous job. And I think that OCA has made a lot of progress and provides some valuable services to our community.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm on the OCA Media Board with, with Tom, but I, I, I want to just draw a little comparison with other community access television stations. There are stations that, they're called PEG stations, Public Educational and Governmental Stations, that are easily multiple times the size of Oregon's, and they do half as much, and they get a lot more money. And the way that, that OCA Media has really stretched the, the few dollars, really, that they get and to do what they do and to win awards for their programming is, it's crazy good. I don't know how else to say it. It's, it's amazing. So, you know, three percent increase to me seems very modest for the service they provide to the community.
Okay, Carly?
As a retired public educator, I have a particular appreciation for the opportunities that OCA Media gives to students and giving them a leg up in the next phase. I know Andy is appreciative of that, too, being a part of the school district. It's one of those things that, especially as, as we become more and more technologically dependent, having kids who can do critical thinking around what is being broadcast and really think about what they're showing, not just, you know, what they're choosing, not just what they're consuming, I think is an invaluable service that we just really need to be supporting as much as possible. So I, and on a personal note, I really appreciate that when I'm not here, I can watch the village board meetings on YouTube live. So it's really good. Thanks.
Lynn?
Ditto to all that was said there, but I do have a quick question about sort of the line items here on the budgetary piece, mostly the donations piece. So it looks as if there's been a, a general increase in your donations from two thousand and twenty-three, which I think is fantastic. If someone in the community was interested in donating to the OCA Media, how would they go about doing that?
If you watch any of our sporting events or anything, you'll see a clip on there asking them, just email paul@ocamedia.com. Our community is very supportive of our efforts, especially some of the, some of the businesses who we, I knock on my, on the doors every year. Some are repeats, some can't say they can't help, and I understand that. But it's important. I, I'm hoping to get twenty thousand this year and, and support that. We'll go into equipment needs. Our equipment is aging. This board, not this board, but Board of Trustees, six or seven years ago approved a pretty big equipment purchase for us. I needed some new, that was two thousand and sixteen when I came on and I looked at the cameras. I said, I can't do anything with these. So we bought some professional-grade cameras that are still in use, that are starting to go. And there's other equipment items that we have to look at. So I'm, so yes, the community's coming forward and we are always looking for more.
Fantastic. You heard it here first. Email Paul. Can hear your inbox just ringing.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Paul. Andy, you have something there?
It's one of those great joys when the points that you were going to make were made by everybody else ahead of time, so you can save the time. So I, the only thing I would say is, when other types of media are seeming to have difficulty, Paul and his group are really hitting all cylinders and doing a great job for our community, keeping everybody involved. So kudos to him and, and thank you for your support.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you both. At least we know the time. Okay, thank you. Item four C, presentation from Village, Village's financial advisor, Ellers, regarding the annual update to the Village Financial Management Plan for Sewer and Water Utilities. Greetings.
Good evening. I am Brian Raymer with Ellers, Senior Municipal Advisor, and I tend to focus on enterprise funds or utilities for communities. So that's why you're seeing me here tonight, and I've been involved in a few of the past plans as well. So we're going to try to hit as much of this as we can, as quickly as we can, but given the magnitude of information, trying to cover two utilities, not only looking five years into the past, but ten years into the future, just jump in if you have a question on a current topic. I would appreciate that. Instead of having to jump back and forth, I think it just makes it easier to tackle the issues that we're covering at the current time. So ultimately, each year, we look at your future capital investments. So that's a ten-year capital improvement plan where we're identifying, how can the utilities pay for these upcoming projects? The utilities, as a function of government, happen to be the most capital-intensive when you compare them to the other funds, individual funds of government. What that means is, costs a lot of money to get these assets in the ground and in the air, costs a lot of money to maintain these assets, and that happens to be the most volatile expense for the utilities is your maintenance accounts, meaning you can't exactly predict a main break and when we need to fix it. So these can be harder to budget for. This is why, when we're looking to identify fiscal sustainability for the utilities, we're really looking at a five-year past performance, not to say woulda, shoulda, coulda, but just to maybe identify some trends and make sure that when we are projecting out into the future, we are doing our diligence in that manner. Meaning, if we're just looking one year, we may not be catching some unique circumstances within the utilities. So then we will project out your ONM, you know, depreciation, because that can be an indicator of if your assets need replacing, and then also how do we fund those projects as stated. And then, most importantly, we'll identify the rate impact, building a ten-year rate plan for ratepayers. So then going on, we'll start with the water utility. What you're looking at here is to kind of answer the question historically, what should our rate revenues be? The American Water Works Association develops what's called a revenue requirement under two methodologies. So it answers that question, what should our rate revenues be? They look at it under two ways, recovering various costs of the system. So the top half of this chart is what's called the cash basis, that is recouping the cash costs of the system. So day-to-day expenses or operating and maintenance and pilot expenses, debt service, and then the third one is probably the most nuanced, that is called cash-funded capital. The way you think about that is to say, what, what kind of annual expenditures do we have out of that year's surplus or maybe prior year's surplus or reserves that we're paying for that technically kind of rates are inherently paying for? So you're not issuing debt for everything. We're not funding everything through impact fees. The rates are paying for some form of capital along the way. So that's what that third bucket in cash basis is trying to acknowledge there. You subtract out your other revenues. This can include, you know, connection or impact fees. This would include, you know, cell tower rents or other operating revenues of the system that are non-rate revenues. And then interest income is generally included. We'll make a note about that a little bit later, but you subtract those out, that builds what's called your revenue requirement. You weigh that against your actual user rate revenue of that year, and then you can measure, are we rate adequate or inadequate? Now, given that cash-funded capital can fluctuate significantly or there may be a large maintenance expense in one year, under the cash basis, you will tend to see this be a little bit more volatile. And that is why the Public Service Commission chooses to use the other methodology, which is the utility basis. But if we're just to kind of stay on the cash basis, you'll kind of see some large negatives in some years, some large positives in some years. These can be things that are kind of hard to navigate if you were to only look at it on this basis. So that's why you're seeing us do it under both. The other thing that I'll mention is just, you'll kind of see the trend under both methodologies that your operating and maintenance expenses have increased over time, which you're not alone in that. So looking at the Public Service Commission's way of looking at it, or what's called the utility basis, you try to recover the same day-to-day operating and maintenance expenses and pilot, but then they look at depreciation, which is of course just kind of an annual formula to say, at the time of install, how, how much did this piece of equipment or asset cost? And then times that out by its useful life, and that we should be recovering over time. However, that does not factor in if you have interest costs because you issued debt for that capital asset or an inflationary factor. So then they add in this third component, which is a rate of return on what's called your net investment rate base, which is a lot of mouth words to just basically say, think about the undepreciated value of your system. So you want to take out that depreciation so that we're not double dipping. What does that value apply a percentage? And the PSC actually sets a benchmark percentage for all utilities. So that's what you're seeing there is that undepreciated value or NIRB, times it by the PSC's benchmark, and that's the dollars they would ask a utility, and that's across the state, to recover. And then they subtract out the same other revenues. However, the PSC does not include interest income, as they see that as too volatile of an expense for utilities to rely on. However, that's causing more and more consternation as interest rates rise and, you know, utilities, of course, seeking opportunities in that manner. So those are, you know, ongoing battles as we try to navigate, how do we calculate user rates? But that said, just recently doing a rate adjustment, we're kind of back on track in twenty-two and twenty-three, and then we have more investment in capital, and you'll kind of see that in the two thousand and twenty-five budget line there for undepreciated value of the system jumping up to twelve million. That's why you start to see that be rate inadequate. Outside of your rates, there are other financial indicators that are very important for utilities, the primary one being reserves. And the reason for that is, you may have revenue bonds outstanding in which you are covenanting to bondholders that you will have a certain amount of reserves restricted. In addition to that, when you think about the volatility as explained, as it relates to maintenance expenses and other, you know, unique capital costs of the system, there's a benefit to having reserves on hand so that you don't always have to issue debt because you can't control the market, but you may be able to control your capital program. So that said, given the size of the utility, we generally look at six months for the Village of Oregon's water utility, and we're just making sure that we're kind of maintaining fiscal sustainability there. And the reserves have been in a healthy place, slightly dipping, but that's a function of, you know, the increased ONM expenses each year and then waiting for the rates to be online for a full year. The other chart that you're seeing in the bottom right is basically thinking about that utility basis, but what if we had a zero percent rate of return? So asking the question, are we recovering operating and maintenance expenses and depreciation alone? Again, prior to the rate adjustment, that answer was no, and now we are. But that can also be an indicator of if we do have to start to replace the system, if it's an older system and we're behind on recovering depreciation, we're not building up enough to replace those costs on an annual basis. So then looking at the future capital program, kind of building towards the ten-year plan for the water utility, you know, we're looking at, it was six and a half million for the undepreciated value of the system, but now we are adding a significant amount of capital, and you'll kind of see why that's jumping up over the years to twenty-five, when I said there was about twelve million dollars of undepreciated value in the system. And then we're continuing that with the ten-year plan here. So again, a total of about twenty-nine million. We do have cash, as mentioned on the previous slide, to kind of downsize debt outside of just the cash shown here. So if we were to try to actually say, what is the total amount of debt? It's not twenty-two and a half million. It's more like just under twenty million. So we're actually downsizing some of this debt with your reserves as well as we go. But those should be, you know, decisions made at the time of financing. Generally, our methodology here is if you have an asset that's going to last a long time, you create a little bit of generational equity by funding that asset over a long period of time. What I mean by that is, today's users are not tomorrow's users. If you were to just pay cash for everything, all of today's users and before would have paid for something that's going to last twenty years from now or maybe more. So... When we look at the future projection, the adjustment that's shown in two thousand When we look at the future projection, the adjustment uh that's shown in twenty twenty-four is something that's already happened. So that's the rate adjustment that I've been speaking to, but this chart works left to right chronologically. Top to bottom revenues against expenditures. And then one of the most important lines is that one with the top and bottom border where you're seeing the net before debt. That is, how much cash do we have to pay for debt and capital? Um, the most important thing there is you weigh that number against your actual debt service. To get to that all in debt coverage at the bottom of the table. So we would recommend that a utility on an annual basis, try to maintain anywhere from a minimum of about one point four or five. Uh, to about one point six, meaning for every dollar of debt service. You're creating a dollar and sixty cents of revenues available for debt service. Why that's important? If you do have a volatile maintenance expense, a main break or multiple main breaks. Uh, flooding, so your, you know, treatment plant's overloaded, whatever it is, um, those are things you can't control. But you are proving to bondholders that you're maintaining adequate coverage on debt on an annual basis. Now, those covenants are usually much lower at about a dollar and twenty-five cents for every dollar of debt service. But you can understand that you don't want to play small margins um with that. In addition, if you are producing any sort of cent over a dollar on your debt service. Theoretically, not paying anything for capital, we're creating that reserve on an annual basis um as well. So again, it's trying to stay fiscally responsible um on the long range instead of just planning one year at a time. So beyond uh the twenty twenty-four adjustment, which was part of our discussions and uh prior financial management plans for the utility. What we've done here is basically identified, we only have certain windows of opportunity to adjust rates with the PSC. The board alone cannot just make a unilateral decision to adjust rates at a certain time or at a certain magnitude. So we have to build our model off of how the PSC looks at it. If you need an adjustment that's greater than one window of opportunity, which is called a simplified rate case. Um, that's more of an inflationary adjustment generally around three percent. However, um, in twenty twenty-three, that was eight percent and twenty twenty-four is four point one percent. But generally, the PSC has set that inflationary adjustment pretty low at uh three percent. So if you need something more than that, we need to do a rate case or a conventional rate case, what's called. There, that's the full rate review that we just completed and was implemented um recently. So the adjustments shown here are trying to say, we have to use one of these windows of opportunity. If the simplified isn't enough, we'll use the PSC's adjustment and then we're recreating that math ten years over. So anytime that a dark green adjustment is shown is calculating the PSC benchmark rate of return. In that year, if that makes sense. So it's so as to say, there may be things that change throughout this. The PSC benchmark rate of return may change. We're going to keep that the same for ten years and this is kind of what that adjustment looks like. And again, this won't be a percent to dollar ratio on the adjustment as we'll get to that later. Please.
So I'm assuming that twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty, where you're showing the conventional full rate case, that's what you're projecting it's likely to be?
Correct.
Based on history and the other depreciations and et cetera. Okay.
Yep. The uh, the real trouble is when you are adding a lot of capital. Think of it, it's immediately not depreciated. So the year that you're adding a lot of capital can be punitive almost. To do that adjustment, we just have a, a period of time where there is a lot of capital being added. You know, it's a growing uh community and growing utility therefore. So um, the other element that I'd say there is, we're rather conservative as the note indicates. We are not assuming any changes in customer counts or usages. So if there are more customer, you know, actual customers paying into the bill period. Off of a fixed and a volumetric rate, those adjustments would come down. Uh, that's another function that's kind of nearly hard to predict. So we generally keep that uh customer count and usage flat. In order to be rather conservative. So I would say this is quite conservative, just thinking through that.
So can I ask clarifying? So rather conservative means it's probably higher than it would be because we want to project worst case. It would be this. Okay. Just want to make sure people watching understand what that means.
Yep. And then if we go to uh the next slide, um, here for the water utility. Um, we convert those percentages into the adjustments for the users. So we did show a little bit of history going back to twenty-two um as well, just to give kind of a bigger picture. As to what just recently happened instead of just showing twenty-four. Um, but that current rate that was just adjusted, you have a uh volume charge of about three dollars and eighteen cents. And then a fixed charge um of about fourteen dollars and forty-two cents and that's per month. And then we're assuming four thousand gallons used per month and then applying that uh each year. So then when we have a percentage jump, we show what that changes to a quarterly bill. So for example, the twenty.
Monthly.
Monthly, sorry, monthly bill. Talk a lot of utilities all day. Uh, monthly bill. Um, so what you'll see there is a thirty-one percent change as was just completed in twenty-four. Resulted in about a four dollar change to that monthly bill. Uh, the fifty percent or almost fifty-one percent would it, would be about a fourteen dollar change uh to a monthly bill and, and so on. So those two obviously converge as we get closer to a hundred dollars. Um, where the percentage to dollar ratio would be one to one, but just so you get an, a sense of what that percentage. As shown on the previous slide kind of means for um an average user at four thousand uh gallons per month. And don't worry, we'll show the full picture of sewer added on uh later. Looking at what the rate comparison then would be and we, we took a sample of Dane County. As is consistent with uh prior presentations, um, what this is looking at is all of the utilities. Um, in the county, um, it, it does provide uh the name of the utility. The one thing I'll just mention there is don't be misled when it says water and sewer or what, it doesn't say sewer. That's just how the PSC names it and that's the database that we pulled this from. It is just water bills only. Um, so in looking at kind of water bills only and highlighting in the light orange. Where uh Oregon's water bills are currently, you know, you're kind of definitely in the bottom third. In terms of uh least expensive and this is uh filtered off of the twelve thousand um gallons. And then if we were to add in the twenty twenty-six adjustment, which is the fifty percent adjustment. Uh, you would jump a few communities um within that. So just kind of understand that's how the, the uh. Rate comparison is built and again, this is kind of off of the PSC's database. The one other thing that that would not take into consideration is if anybody else is adjusting their rates in that time. While we do work with a good amount of the communities on this list, um, you know, we're, we don't have predictions as to when the effective date. Will be, but just understand that other utilities adjust rates on a regular basis uh as well. So this is saying at the point in time, which was two weeks ago, these are what everybody's rates were in uh the county. And then what the twenty-six adjustment would look like, everything else being equal.
I was just going to say, do you want to move over seats to the sun?
Maybe I'll come back up.
There you go.
There we go. Um, so this plan, again, what we tried to do, the methodology for the ten year plan. Is always if we can use a simplified adjustment, we'll use it. But if we need something more than that, we're going to show what the PSC resulting uh based off of all of the assumptions would be. So try to use a simplified. If we can't, we use a conventional. Um, we would look at making sure that debt coverage is met. And that we're using as, as much cash as possible, but also staying above our benchmark or policy um there. And then the impact fee adjustment was applied um as um recently adjusted um by the village. And then again, no new users or rate revenues added to the, you know, rate revenue line item. The impact fees are really the only adjustment made it, made for, you know, future growth um there. Again, that's a measure to add in some conservatism to the planning. Um, so likely the adjustments could come down. Um, some alternatives potentially available is when we were building this plan and talking through it with staff. Is we did look at just using municipal securities for the planning environment. Um, but if you do qualify for the safe drinking water fund loan program through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Which you're using for the wastewater treatment plant on the sewer side, it's called a clean water fund loan for sewer. Um, if you did happen to qualify for that, for the water projects, there could be additional grant funding available. Or lower interest rates. So um, we did again, a measure of conservatism to kind of keep in the municipal securities. In case you don't qualify, so that we don't have to come back later and say, whoops, it's twenty percent more. Um, we'd rather say, whoops, it's twenty percent less. Um, not that that'll be the case, but you understand how uh we try to keep our jobs. So any questions on the water utility before I advance uh to sewer?
Just a follow-up question on this loan um opportunity. I know we've talked about it in the sewer case quite a bit. Because of the projects that we have currently going on. What does the timeline look like as far as knowing if we're qualifying for this? For our water projects?
I can answer that unless you are, you can, yeah.
Why don't you go ahead and I'll just.
Sure. Oh, well, then you got firsthand knowledge. So I, yeah, give that answer and then I'll talk about the general timeline, yeah.
So one of the big things that is a question for this year is where we rank on the list. As far as points. So every project that is submitted for pre-application gets a number of points. Based on um certain aspects of the project and then certain benchmarks that the utility as a utility hits. And typically in the past, um, people frankly hadn't been applying for these loans enough. That those points really meant anything except for ranked the projects for principal forgiveness. So essentially, money, grant money handed out to the utilities. Now with a whole bunch of aging infrastructure in the state, BIL money. Um, and, and just a confluence of projects that got postponed because of COVID. Now there's just a ton of projects that are out in the world that need this funding. And the programs, both the clean water fund and the safe drinking water loan program are really stretched pretty thin. Particularly in this cycle. And so, so the points all of a sudden do matter. Um, and what we, we found out that we ranked fairly low for the well three project. When the original um priority list rankings came out in, I believe it was May or June. And so we went back and did a number of things. Many of you watched many videos to try to bring those points up. We also did some stuff on the staff side as well, submitted all of that and requests that they re-rank us. And put us back kind of in a new position on that list. So I spoke with the DNR on Thursday last week and they said that those new rankings are likely coming by the end of this month. So we'll have that kind of new positioning. It's possible other utilities have done something similar. And everyone's kind of jockeying to get those points, but we'll at least have an idea of where those. Where we fall on the points scale relative to other projects. Now, when we'll actually get the funding list, that will follow. I believe that's in November, but Brian, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's what they say every year?
Yes. The theory, November, we'll know. But we should at least have an idea. I would say that we'll have a very good idea if we won't qualify. Um, if we can completely strike it, where we're probably going to be, quite honestly, is somewhere in the middle and, and a gray area. So we'll likely be waiting.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing that I would add to that is uh, it's a, it's a busy program. Uh, as you mentioned currently, um, there's a lot of lead service line replacements that need to be done. Uh, the entire state has been notified of bipartisan infrastructure law. Although it started hitting last fiscal year for the state and we had the previous people who always applied, applying. Now we have an added pool of, I would honestly say sixty to a hundred communities applying for this program. So it is more competitive. I don't know that that lasts too long. Um, just because we think about, there's a lot of smaller communities applying that just don't have as robust of a capital list. The other thing that I'll add is generally projects that have growth components added to them do not score as well as. You know, think the DNR thinking about the need for existing users. So um, just kind of think about those things. Um, at the same time, I would say it's always worth applying. To just see where you kind of rank or, or land. And if your capital improvement program can be navigable to those that we know won't get um qualification versus might. Those may be, you know, the movable objects depending on project need, right? You know, if we, we need the well, et cetera, whatever, you know, the other factors may be. But we would just generally recommend, even if you're not getting principal forgiveness, you get fifty-five percent of the market rate. If you do happen to fall within a high enough ranking where they have money left over to loan monies to you. Not just give principal forgiveness or grant funds. So if you're getting two percent versus five percent interest rates, you can understand the benefits uh there. Okay. So then we'll jump to sewer and I'll go a little quicker on this one because we've kind of described how the charts are organized. But answering the same question historically, you know, how do we do versus the two methodologies of building rate revenues? Uh, the utility basis is a little less important, um, because the sewer utility is not regulated by the Public Service Commission. Um, however, um, you know, there can be just an acknowledgement of, are we recovering ONM and depreciation? Is that is a pretty important indicator for utilities? So that said, looking at the cash basis, um, you know, the increase ONM and cash use for projects. You know, says it's putting pressure on rates, um, but that's just under the annual um look there. If you can plan for rate adjustments in a more timely manner, which we've been doing. Um, you know, that'll level out kind of on a long-term basis. The other element that I just say there is. You know, if you, if you have a reserve account that's above benchmark or policy, right? It's understandable that you'd use it um there and therefore say, we really weren't rate adequate. Um, we're just using this, you know, extra cash, if you will, that we had on hand. Like I would say, um, you know, twenty-four is kind of a good indicator there. Overall, um, sewer utility, because, you know, our choices for rate adjustments can be quicker. And also more consistent without as large of a magnitude. You tend to see a little bit better balance uh as compared to water utility. It's like, whoop, we got a big project and now our rates go up for the water utility sewer. We can build for three to four years, right? For a big project and we're, we're kind of going to talk about that in a little bit. Looking at the uh financial indicators, again, um, we do have uh healthy reserves uh for the sewer utility. Uh, as mentioned, uh though as well, the operating ratio kind of saying, we're not concerned about rate of return. As that system ages, there can be concerns there. So um, all in all, the utilities uh in a relatively healthy spot. Because those two can counteract each other in terms of the action items to be taken. So um, I would just say from a historical perspective, looking at the, this slide and the slide before. The utility's in a healthy position. It's all about building for the future now. So then looking at uh the sewer's uh future capital. Um, the current value of the system at around fifteen million and then we're looking to add about fifty million with the primary driver of that. Um, being the wastewater treatment plant. Um, there is, you know, a lot of capital on the table, so we do kind of have to build. Um, towards funding those projects. Um, and we do have um additional cash to downsize debt. Um, it's not as much as uh the water utility. As we are going to be covenanting to keep some of these reserves restricted as a result of the large projects. Um, and so we do kind of want to monitor that in the near term, but that would be some. But that would be something, again, that as we're making individual financing decisions, that we might have some additional capacity to downsize debt in the future for those projects that are not Clean Water Fund Loan eligible. So projects kind of outside of the treatment plant, it's more advantageous to apply cash to those if they're going to be municipal securities at 5% or something higher, right? So you can save on interest costs over the long run. So generally kind of the methodology there for the sewer utility is we are looking to use cash where possible for the, you know, general revenue debt that's not Clean Water Fund Loan. So then looking at the sewer's future projection, again, kind of a similar table to the water utility. And the only message here is focus again on all-in debt coverage. And again, how that's built is the net before debt over your actual debt service. And again, we kind of want to hit 1.45 as a minimum there for the sewer utility. We generally don't need kind of the, the worry towards 1.6 in our minds when we're building these plans. The reason being is you can quickly make an adjustment with sewer rates much more rapidly than you can for water rates. So you don't have to be worried about margin as much. But you, you should be worried about margin enough to say, don't just go for the minimum that you are required to be covenanted to within your bond documents. You should go above that. So generally, we're recommending about a 1, 4, or 5 coverage ratio there. The primary drivers, again, of the larger adjustments on the early onset is going to be having to prove the minimum coverage, which will be about 125 on your Clean Water Fund Loan at the time of loan closing. And there's a disadvantage there because they will not include future users in that. So even if you're like, hey, we've been building 100 homes a year, we're in budget year 24. If we were closing on the loan today and you were saying, why do we need to adjust rates when we know we'll have 100 users? We got these permits pulled, you know, we can see the rooftops going up. They will not include that. It's based off of your last fiscal year. So a lot of the driver for the near-term larger adjustments relative to the later-year smaller adjustments is due to the magnitude of that project and saying that we do need to build for loan closing. Again, these will be things that we can plan out for the long term. But as we're making our financial, you know, the actual loan closing decisions, we may be able to navigate that depending on the timing of loan closing, what the last fiscal year looked like, et cetera, so. So then kind of putting both of those plans together, but to highlight the adjustments there. I apologize, I just wanted to confirm one thing. I, I'll note that the notes section of this was grabbing, it's, it's linked in Excel, of course. So I could blame Excel, but it's my fault. We should be connecting the current charge under Note 3 to kind of your 2024 charges because that would be the, the current charges that you've most recently adopted. So the current volumetric rate is $5.42 with a fixed charge of $7.13 on a monthly bill. But then kind of going through the sewer utilities impact, you know, those larger, nearer-term adjustments, looking at, you know, the 60% over the two years, that equates to about a $20 change on a monthly bill there. So again, we're not a dollar or a percent to dollar ratio of one to one there on the, on the monthly bill for the sewer utility. And taking all of those adjustments as shown on the previous slide, which was a cumulative adjustment of about 168% over 10 years, that equates to about $43 per month. And then the one other element that's added here on top of just looking at the impact previously shown for the water utility is an identification of what that means for an annual water and sewer bill. So if somebody's both a water and sewer customer, what that might look like as a change over the prior year, not just a monthly billing period. And then the other thing that we weigh that against is trying to get to the one-yard line of 100-yard football field for median household income and talking through affordability, which is a much lengthier discussion. But understanding if we're just kind of getting a starting point, which the American Waterworks Association uses in terms of a percentage of median household income. They generally say per utility, if you're kind of above that 2% MHI, you may start to need to have more lengthier affordability discussions. And we've frozen that MHI. Now, again, a median household income isn't going to increase as fast as, you know, a commercial user and an industrial user can adjust their prices. So we are very sensitive in our office towards these numbers. And actually, the American Waterworks Association says, you know, 2% to 4% for utilities. I would try to stick closer to 2% per utility. And here, over the 10-year planning period being at about 2% for both utilities, I would say kind of still meets that standard. However, it should always be considered what the individualized income level is per household and, and concerns as it relates there. So we do have, you know, kind of larger charts on, on that matter and can talk more about that if needed. Just knowing the magnitude of the percent adjustments, I would say can, understanding too that the dollar adjustments are not one-to-one over the 10-year planning period. The other element being we're not factoring in new users into the revenue. So hopefully this can be something that is lower in the future. Then looking at the sewer bill comparison, we're grabbing similar communities that we have in the past. If there's any initiative to discuss other utilities, we certainly can. But understand this is not as public as the water bills are on the PSC's website. You could go to the individual communities' websites, as I was charged to do when I was an intern, and quickly found out that those are not up to date ever. So it's kind of, if you want to survey, and I know some engineers do it, as engineering firms that is in the state, do it. What we found in those surveys too is they're quickly outdated. So it is harder when there's not that, you know, public available information of everybody's current user rates. But we do, you know, kind of consistently for your group, grab these utilities and just have identified what their bills are. And then kind of looking at what are the potential adjustments. And that's on a cumulative basis there when you see the 89 and the 168 and what that adjustment kind of looks like. And again, one thing I'll mention is this is saying for 26 and then the planned period being 10 years from now as well, so. Kind of a similar approach for the sewer utility then as well, where we do kind of want to make sure that we're making our rate adjustments for debt coverage, even assuming no new users. And if those users come online, we can lower those adjustments as we get to the, you know, decisions at the time that we're implementing the rates. The other thing at play as well is, as best we can, trying to, knowing that we can adjust sewer rates more or less when we would like to, we try to do the rate implementation around the water utility as well. That's not always, doesn't work in perfect harmony. But generally, that's kind of a secondary thing that we're looking at when we're trying to build this plan and trying to make sure that we're using cash. So we're not just saying, here's your rate adjustment for debt coverage. And then all of a sudden you have an extra $20 million of cash on hand. So we're kind of backing out debt service as well by using a mix of cash and debt for your future capital where available. And the sun didn't set before I finish, so that's good. Any other questions on the utilities?
Questions for Brian? None, thank you, Brian.
Yep, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Excuse me. Item 5, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,972,203, $203.46. Motion, staff recommendation motion to approve. Tom and Tim. Questions, comments? Lynn, please.
So this item was on the last vouchers and I chose not to ask this question, but it came up again and so now I must. It's on page 31 of the packet, 7, 2, 4, or 5. What is water wash stone?
Oh, that's just a clean wash stone that we use for backfill and for water main breaks when we're backfilling up. Like, it's just, it doesn't have a lot of fines or anything in it. It's very clean washed gravel.
Awesome. Okay, thanks.
Guys are out there scrubbing the stones every day.
I have a six-year-old who'd be happy to wash stones for you at any time, so.
Anybody else? Tom?
I just kind of gave me pause when I saw almost $2 million expenditures. I did flip through the list and look at some of the large ticket items. There's a lot of things being wrapped up in this and J.C. Park elements. There's some, South Prairie Parkway had a large, large element and then the debt service. So it seems like a big number, but they were all things that were planned and, and were in process and they're just, it hits this time of year type of thing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion. Second, this is a roll call vote.
Mankie?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Feschen?
Yes.
And Dan Campbell.
Yes. Item 6, consent agenda, staff recommendation motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. A, unwanted prescription drug collection grant contract in the amount of $1,000 with the state of Wisconsin debt cap. And B, authorized developer agreement preserve phase 2 award contract prescription of park improvements on outlights, outlights, outlots, pardon me, 9 and 11, looking for motion Jason. And Amanda, discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Item 7, reports of committees under for discussion and/or possible action, a planning permission. One, amended and restated conditional use permit agreement for Bad Art Company to allow indoor and outdoor commercial entertainment in the planned business zoning district located at 787 North Main Street, Suite 105. Commissioner's staff recommendation motion to approve as presented, Jason. And Amanda, again, Elise, do you have something to add on this?
Just a couple of quick clarifications. So in December, January, Emma was in front of Planning Commission and Board to get the indoor use for the gathering space and, you know, beverage use of Bad Art Company. And then obviously, since gotten her liquor license, she's been working with Joy and I over the last couple of months to define an outdoor area, which the map is included, I think, on the next page of some outdoor tables where that would go. Still working with Joy on getting the premise description updated. So if this is approved tonight, the alcohol would still be limited to just being served inside until the liquor premise description is updated. I also just wanted to note Attorney Puntaz and I were going back and forth. And just to clarify, this is a separate conditional use permit just for outdoors. So the title of this would just be conditional use permit for outdoor commercial entertainment. He thought it would be easier to just have two separate ones in case one gets revoked or changed, amended in the future. But it doesn't change any of the content of what you're seeing there, so. But yeah, we worked with her on just kind of clarifying what she's visioning for. Some very small music events, mostly just outdoor space for people to enjoy making art and having beverage outside and gathering together.
Amanda?
I, I just was reading through and the, did she have any idea where, where the, you know, I said it was limited, you said it was limited to one or two musicians, potentially, as long as you keep, maintain the, the square, the foot distance, whatever. I'm, I just don't see where they'd be standing unless they're in front of the door or they're replacing one of the tables.
Yeah, I think they'd be moving a table or maybe kind of moving two tables together if they were going to have outdoor music. But it sounds like it'd be like a very small scale, just kind of a vision. At this point, she had, didn't have anything particular in mind, planned, but yeah, still have to be within that zone. So shifting around a furniture probably.
Currently, then Tom?
I was just reading through it and didn't see any mention of talking with the neighboring businesses about this. I'm, I'm assuming she's done that. I mean, I would think that if you were going to do something that impacted other businesses, that that would have taken place, but I didn't see it in here.
Yeah, she obviously needs to have landlord permission, just to be a tenant here to, to do this. The hours are limited to 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., so she did mention that, you know, other than Hy-Vee, all the other businesses around there would be typically closed at that point. Maybe some evening events at the Infinity Martial Arts. But again, not something that's anticipated to be extremely loud. There's not a lot of residences nearby, so that's a pro. But yeah, she purposely wanted to limit those hours to later in the evening when most of those other businesses would be closed.
Thank you.
Tom, please.
I think it's a minor thing, but on page 70 of the package and page 75, we have the same chart appearing. And in one, it shows a six-foot setback and another shows a five-foot setback. And I believe it was a change that was made during the Planning Commission meeting.
Yes.
But I just don't know which one is the one that's going forward.
Yeah, so there actually will be probably about six feet of space, but just to be consistent with what the, her minimum required walkway area is, it's five feet. So that was just a change made the actual conditional use agreement, so pages. 71 through 76 of the packet there is actually what will be recorded at the county, so that will be the final version.
So the final version will be the five foot with the.
Right, right. There'll probably be more space than five feet, but she needs to have at least five feet clear.
Thank you. Tim?
Why are they doing this now? We're heading into the cold season, I mean.
It take, it obviously takes a little while to get through the process. I mean, it's still 88 degrees outside today, so hopefully she gets a little bit of time. I'm looking forward to sitting outside in some fall weather soon. But yeah, I think just kind of getting ready and as she gets up and running and hearing from customers and getting kind of a, a better handle on what spaces are available where people would like to be. I think probably drawing some people in, just seeing that there's activity going on outside too. Oh, somebody's painting outside or whatever it might be, but probably more outdoor events to come in 2025.
Also, this is Wisconsin. We do a lot of things outside that don't have.
Don't make sense, yeah.
Tell me somebody wearing shorts.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Thank you, Elise. 7B, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, one, Community Conversation Initiative.
Yes, so in the beginning of August, one of the committee members, Lena Lee Roos, came and presented. I talked last week about, we, in our meeting at the beginning of the month, we addressed several of the questions that the board brought up. And I was hoping to be able to bring an invitation and description tonight. However, a couple of people on our committee who are the best writers are not, are not well right now. And so that has not happened. But what I'd like to say is that all village staff, village board trustees, committee members are invited to participate in our pilot community conversation, which will happen at the library on October 29th. We're having our practice at our next Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee meeting, practicing our facilitation, making sure we have the space available. And I will be sending out to you in the next week or so, an invitation to that evening. It will be, we said, 6 to 7:30, yeah, 6 to 7:30. We, because the library closes at 8 and that gives us time to, to take things down. I think I described the, the process before and Lena also described it. So we're, we're really hopeful that we'll get a lot of participation from village staff, board, and committee members to give us an idea of, you know, how this will go before we have a larger community conversation. So, and that will be in 2025. We'll get feedback and et cetera, so. Please mark your calendar. Thanks.
All right, questions or comments for Connie?
I guess my question is, could you, Connie?
Um, I guess my question is, could you, Carly, clarify for the public sort of why we're piloting? Just the village board and if they wanted to know what that conversation sounded like or looked like, how could they understand kind of?
Sure, absolutely. So first I'll start by saying all of our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee meetings are open. Most of them happen at People's United Methodist Church in the fireside room. We always have snacks. And uh you're welcome to come and be part of the conversations that we're having about how to make uh our village more welcoming and inclusive. I think we all want this to be a place where everyone feels welcome and can thrive. So we know that sometimes these conversations can be difficult and this is not meant to be a difficult conversation. It's um. The question is, what does small town feel mean? What do we mean when we say we want to maintain a small town feel? Because we interpret that in lots of different ways. And so. The conversation is a facilitated exercise in having people respond to statements. In their level of agreement and then having conversations about their interpretations of the statements. Um and it's meant to help us understand one another's perspectives. The reason why we want to do it as a pilot to begin with is so that we. As committee members on the D E I committee can practice our facilitation and get feedback from. Village board members, staff, people, people on committees who we know are really vested in this community, not that people who live here aren't, but. To to help us be better at facilitating a conversation with people who may not know one another, who may uh have very, very divergent opinions. So that we can hear one another and we can uh use the information that we gain to. Report back to this board about ways that we can make this just um a just a better place to be. Thanks for that question because it helped me clarify what it needed to say.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thanks, Carly.
Yeah, thank you.
Item eight unfinished business items for discussion and or possible action. A. Review draft assessment of service and staffing needs for funding options for possible referendum to exceed property tax levy limits and related draft community survey.
Yeah, I'm gonna cover this and talk for a little bit on this topic. Um Jeff's gonna move the screens over to. Remember that new programming, right?
It better work.
There you go. All right, so uh just to recap um what we're talking about here. Uh so of course, earlier this spring. Uh the board had some conversations about uh. The increasing cost uh in expenses of our village services against uh. Flat or decreasing revenue and and not a lot of revenue options to address that. Uh and so the board are determined to move forward with. Uh assessing our needs and and determining if uh an operational lev- uh referendum to exceed levy limits was was something that we wanted to do. And possibly as soon as as April twenty twenty-five. Um so we uh brought on uh a public communications firm, Mueller Communications. Um who are quickly specializing in this this type of work because um this is becoming more common with municipalities. And then also uh community perceptions, who is assisting with our survey work as part of this process, and they've been involved with um school districts. In this process as well as now municipalities too. So um if you remember back in uh July. Um we came to the board with a list of of needs that we've identified uh for village services. Um you know. As far, you know, going back from deferred needs to needs of the present day to needs going forward as far as ten years into the future. Um and we came out of that meeting and so this tonight's meeting is the culmination of. Uh further assessing those needs um and bringing together a lot of information that I don't think is necessarily surprising to to this board or or staff. Um but it's certainly um uh more of a cohesive and and sort of all in one place. Uh report, which was provided to the board via email earlier today. So I'm gonna do a little bit of a presentation uh on this. Um and then we also have Scott Gerard. He's here from community perceptions. He's gonna talk about the community survey portion of this process, which will. Transition over to here in the fall. So uh I'm gonna start. Uh just to kind of cover a little bit more detail of, I guess, sort of our recap here and then what this uh report has done and has accomplished. Um so I think. This slide contains things that are probably not surprising again to the to board and and to staff. Um we're obviously facing funding challenges for our ongoing operational expenses and the revenues that we need to support those. Um as I mentioned, we had a lot of conversation about that early this year, but this isn't something new. I mean, this is something we've talked about over the la- the the last two to three budget cycles at least. Um it's something that might be coming down and something that we need to consider. Um and this is happening for a variety of reasons. Um obviously, we're a growing community, so uh the village population is increasing. Uh which creates more demand on uh our services. Obviously, more police calls, more people walking in the library, more people at the senior center, more people on election day. Um increases in population just naturally create more demand. Uh village expenses uh because of that, not not just demand, but even if things were not growing, um if things were status quo. Uh expenses are rising just simply because of the last couple of years of inflation, and there's a really good chart here that will will show that. Um and then again, demand for services is increasing. Again, it's not necessarily population either increasing. It's uh the physical expansion of the village itself is is growing and infrastructure is growing along with it. So there's more demand for uh maintaining streets, more demand for mowing grass at new parks and that sort of thing. Um and then also I would add to that too, the types of demands for services are changing. And so I think over the last couple of years, we've talked a lot about. Different things that this village hasn't done a whole lot of in the past, and those things include public transportation, public art, environmental sustainability. Um uh those sorts of things. So um the the type of demand on village uh operations and the services desired from the community is changing. Um and we don't necessarily have the resources to to meet those demands. And then, of course, the last line there, um limited permissible opportunities to increase revenue exist. And you're familiar with those, but I'll get into a couple of them here. So getting into those things a little bit more in detail, and again, the the report that was sent to the board today contains all this information, and we'll have this out on the village website starting tomorrow morning. Um but in terms of population, uh the village has doubled in size in the last thirty years, and. When you add twenty twenty-four into that chart, we're starting to get pretty close to about a thirty percent increase in population just within the last ten years. And again, as I mentioned, uh more people in the community means more demand for services. Um again, as I mentioned before, uh growing costs, so uh employee wages, again, these are these are costs that. We have to pay the bill of every year uh in an ongoing basis. So employee wages, supplies, uh services, um paying the utility bills for our buildings. These are costs that we have every year in an ongoing basis, and those things are going up, just as we've seen in your own personal lives uh in terms of inflation over the last couple of years. Um so as I mentioned, even if things, you know, growth is a big part of of the challenge with all of this, but. Even if things are status quo, it's still a challenge, and there are many communities in Wisconsin who are facing this that aren't growing like we are that are facing the same challenges. Just because of growing costs to existing uh services. Um another component of this is uh the village staff. So all of these demands are are of course growing on the village staff who are providing these services. Public services are provided in a vacuum. They're provided by people, and um as you can see in this chart. Uh the amount of people that provide these services has been pretty stagnant. It's grown a little bit. In the last couple of years, we've been able to do a couple of things, but. Uh we've gone from around sixty full-time equivalents to still just under seventy, around sixty-eight uh within the last ten years. Uh and you'll see a couple of, I'll have a couple of examples um that I'll just mention. Um so. And you can see these in the report, but I just want to highlight a couple. So the police department, um I think Chief Pangkoff's done a pretty good job, including at the last meeting of. Of talking about some of the issues um that her department faces. Increases in um calls that require two officers to respond, increases in serious crimes like assaults. Um the numbers uh have increased pretty significantly when you look at the report um just in the last couple of years. And we know we've heard that from from chief many times about that. Um and and one statistic that came out of the work that we did too. Um was comparing our police officer staffing levels to some of our peer communities. And we're one of the lowest when you compare staffing to per one thousand in population um to those peer communities. Um. Another department, I'll just, I'll mention uh the community development department, Elise's department, because she's almost the only employee. Uh Leanne is also her employer, her only other employee. Um but when we talk about things like some of the stuff that we've, we we want to invest more resources in, like housing or economic development. Um or even things like sustainability, um or even public art has fallen sometimes in the lap of Elise. Um these new things uh and and being proactive in some of these areas, we just simply don't have anybody who can do these things. And we have one staff or maybe two staff who have these things on their plate that they can handle, but oftentimes, like in Elise's case. She's spending an hour or two hours on the phone talking with someone about a fence for their property, which isn't necessarily a great use of of her time when we have all these other. More bigger strategic things to think about. Um the library, senior center, a couple of things that came out of this. Um for the library, sixty-two percent more visits this year through the same time last year. Twenty-five percent more uh materials checked out in the same period. And a hundred and forty percent more reference questions answered in the same time period from last year. And from January to July of this year, seventy-five percent of the days that the library was open, they were understaffed. Uh for the senior center, uh a couple of things, one example I'll give. So in two thousand nine. Senior center had two full-time case managers working forty hours a week. They served fifty-eight adults who are enrolled in case management hours. In twenty twenty-three, there were still the same two case managers, but they are now part-time. They've been reduced to thirty-two hours per week instead of the forty hours. Uh and now they handle two hundred and twenty adults enrolled in case management hours. So they're working with eighty percent fewer hours for times the clients. And so the the way that they've done that is they've reduced um outreach, so proactively outreach in to find people who may not actually reach out themselves. Um and they have not, uh they've scaled back informational and they're not doing any more programs and things of that nature. So they're just basically reacting to the caseload that's being put on their plate. Um and another statistic that somewhat is that is related to that, um the uh fastest-growing uh segment of the U S population is the eighty-five and overage group. And the percentage of Dane County's population aged sixty and over, uh which is eligible for for senior center services. Was fifteen point four percent in twenty-ten, fif- is now more than twenty percent today, and by twenty forty, it's projected to be uh about twenty-five point two percent of the population. So the. The population that senior center serve serves is is also increasing. Uh for the public works department, uh I think one of the things that stuck out to me that I'll mention is um the comparison to the city of Stone. It's very similar community, similar size, offer the same kind of um municipal services that that the village of Oregon offers. Excluding the utility um employees, you know, water sewer, they also operate an electric utility over there, so taking them out of the equation. So we're just talking public works, parks, facilities. They have seven more full-time employees than the village of Oregon has and twenty twenty more seasonal employees during the summer. So moving on to the next slide. So staying on staff. So we've talked about employee compensation with the village for for quite a while. Um two years ago, we did a a study, engaged a consultant to help us study our. Uh employee wages and helped us uh create a new compensation plan with new wage scales that were based on uh the market. And at that time in twenty twenty-two, the results of that study showed um between for for all. Employees and and groups of employees, um salaries were on average about six to fourteen percent below. Um what do you call the market for comparable positions in comparable communities? So basically, a a public works group person, for example. Doing, getting the same qualifications and uh doing the same types of things, could go ten minutes to Verona or ten minutes to Stone or ten minutes to Pittsburgh and make potentially six to fourteen percent more. Basically doing the same thing. Um so we've done, we've done a lot of work there uh over the last couple of years. Um and we've actually gotten fifty percent of our staff moved up to where they should be on that scale. But we still have another fifty percent, and those are our longest-tenured employees who are not to the place where they need to be on that scale quite yet. And so that's um still about another three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars um to get them there, inclusive of all of the benefits that are impacted by. Um salaries, so including FICA, uh retirement, workers' compensation, those are all based off salaries. And then beyond that, um. Every three to five years, when you have a a compensation system that's based on the market, you want to go back and check the market every, you know, periodically. Every three to five years was recommended to us by our consultant. And so we we plan to do that next year um for possible increases in twenty twenty-six, assuming we have the the resources to implement it. Um so there could be some further movement um as as the market has shifted. Of course, in twenty twenty-two, there's a crazy amount of inflation going on. And um we tried to build, anticipate some of that into our compensation scale, but um again, there could be some additional movement there. And then on top of that, our uh police officers who are in the union will renegotiate their contract in twenty-six for twenty twenty-seven. Um we expect that things will move there as well. Um and so we we anticipate another two hundred to three hundred thousand, just to kind of anticipate. What we expect over the next two to three years to to anticipate that movement. Um so this is the uh, I mentioned this before earlier in the presentation, this is a chart showing. The percentage increase to our property tax levy allowed for net new construction, which is. Uh essentially the allowable levy increase for ongoing operation, operational costs. Um compared to the annual inflation rate. And as we've we've discussed at this level, you know, in the past. You know, five, six, seven years ago, it was maybe okay. We were getting by, but um as I mentioned, that that inflation factor. You can see in these last two years, eight percent in twenty twenty-three against uh, you know, maybe two and a half percent increase allowable in our levy that year. And of course, keep in mind levy, property taxes are our primary source of revenue. About sixty percent, sixty to seventy percent of our revenue to pay for ongoing operational expenses. The ability to increase that for ongoing operational expenses is tied to new construction value. So again, and I know we've talked about this many times, but it bears repeating. The village cannot increase its property taxes for just inflationary increases in existing value. Sometimes there's a perception, but when my value went up, the village is gonna raise taxes with it. Well, there's correlation but not causation there. It's not necessarily tied together. Um or that all of this value brings it, all the new new growth brings in sufficient value to pay for it, but. It's the way that it's factored and way it's calculated under state law, it provides, you know, again, you can see it here, fairly minimal increases, two percent, three percent. Um you know, never exceeding four percent in any of the years here. And so when you're working against five percent. And so when you're working against five percent or eight percent inflation, you can see how that can quickly get away from you, even if you're just standing still. And the, the other thing that I'll mention too is, so that's the operational side. So this is, this is expenses to pay employee wages, it's expenses to pay property ta- the property insurance bill, pay the liability on the police cruisers, you know, pay for the services that we have, pay for programming and things like that, the stuff that we, we pay to keep the lights on, doors open, staff being paid, stuff that we pay every single year, year after year. There's a second component of the property tax, which is the amount that we use to pay for debt service. And again, it spares repeating, I know everybody at, on the village board is aware of this, but for things like major capital expenses, whether it's a new library, a major street reconstruction project, the JC community park project, those are projects that are funded by borrow, primarily by borrowing. And borrowing in subsequent years, the cost to pay debt payments on that borrowing in subsequent years can be covered by increases to property, to the property tax levy. So there is flexibility for local governments to increase the property tax levy specifically to cover debt payments for borrowing for things like, again, libraries and other major projects, street projects, parks projects. That flexibility doesn't exist on the operating side, so that, the ability to raise funds for that using the property tax is strictly tied to this factor related to new construction value. The other major component of our revenue for ongoing operational expenses is of course shared revenue, which is revenue that we receive from the state. So if property taxes make up sixty to seventy percent of our revenue, probably anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent is, is made up of shared revenue. So in two thousand three, we, the village received just a little over four hundred thousand dollars in shared revenue. By two thousand twenty-three, it was receiving two hundred and thirty-three thousand. So you can see, obviously, there was a, a nice decrease and then kind of remaining stagnant over the last ten years. So if, if all things had been kept up with inflation from the level that we were provided in two thousand three, we would be at more than seven hundred thousand dollars in shared revenue now. Now, last year, the state legislature passed Act Twelve, which provided some additional shared revenue funding for two thousand twenty-four. So we're up to about four seventy, four hundred and seventy thousand in two thousand twenty-four. So we got a nice bump back, but again, that really kind of put us back to where we were twenty years ago. And again, if we're talking inflation for where we were twenty years ago, we would need another three hundred to four hundred thousand just to be where we were in two thousand three. So there's very limited options, obviously, to fund operating expenses. We've kind of been closed off under state law for a lot of different things that can be used in other states, local sales tax, even local in, income tax in some cases. Some fees and charges are also restricted, so we can't necessarily use those, and oftentimes they can be unreliable as well. There are a couple of things out there, the wheel tax, the streetlight charge, those are some low-hanging fruit, this village is, is pulled on those, helped generate about five hundred thousand dollars, just a little bit under five hundred thousand per year. So in those thing, those, those revenues are filling ongoing operating expenses. So if they went away, we would need another revenue source to, as I said, pay those bills, pay staff salaries, those, those ongoing operational costs. So the last thing that, that we have really to pull on is of course a referendum, and that can, assuming it's approved, the voters can approve to have the village exceed its levy limit, and that's a one-time permanent property tax levy increase. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, back in July, we had a whole bunch of needs that we had brought together across all the departments and their costs, and we kind of had those prioritized ins, into some groups. We spent some time over the last couple of months, better kind of organizing those and, and breaking them out into some different options, and I'll just kind of go through those really quickly, these are all outlined in, in the report, as I mentioned, that the board has, and then we'll get that up on the website as well. But we, we broke those, what was initially four priority levels in the, the needs identified in July into several options, I believe there's eight, eight options. So, and I'll go through them here quickly and, and just go over the impacts. So the one option that we, we sort of broke out and put onto an island unto its own was the replace revenue option, which was to replace that wheel tax and that streetlight charge. So they would go away, the amount of money that we get from that would be backfilled by property tax. And so you could see what that is there on a median value home in Oregon, which is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That would be an estimated increase of about a hundred and ten dollars and ninety-seven cents annually on property taxes. And I'll just mention too, so the, the median home value means half of the homes are more valuable than that, and half of them are less valuable than that. And in terms of this option, if you have, if you are a single-family home with two vehicles and the streetlight charge, it's about a hundred and one, a hundred and two dollars currently. So it's almost kind of close to a wash for anybody that is at the median home value and below, maybe contributing less overall. Of course, if you have more vehicles, then it starts to become a little bit of a different story. But anybody that would be over, so fifty percent of the homes in the community who are over that, could expect their taxes to, the amount of taxes that need to go to replace that revenue would be greater than the fees that they're currently paying. So the first option, as I mentioned, that replace revenue was kind of a standalone option. So when you look at these options, A through, I believe it's G, you can just add that on top of it. So an option A, we call that minimum staffing, this is for basically what we call the, kind of a public safety, employee safety and risk management option, it's three office, four officers, two public works and parks crew, and then an HR director position, and that's it, it's just kind of the basic safety and risk criteria. So that's an estimated increase of two hundred and twelve dollars and four cents on a median value home. And then, again, if we wanted to add that replace revenue, that would be in addition. So we're talking three hundred and twenty-two dollars for those two options. Option B is, includes option A, and then also this option would do, I think what I would consider addressing needs that should have probably been addressed before two thousand twenty-four. So these are things that really, we really should have had going into two thousand twenty-four. So this is a lot of operational spending, it's staffing across all departments, it's for all existing services that the village currently has, and that's an estimated increase of four hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six on the median value home. Option C is all of that previously, plus some additional staffing and compensation, employee compensate, addressing employee compensation. I would consider this option C to be, if, if option B was addressing prior, pre-two thousand twenty-four needs, this is really addressing probably what we should have addressed this year, or maybe twenty twenty-five, we should have been in a position to do, be addressing these things. This is a five hundred and forty-four dollar increase on the median value home. And so then option D is all of that, plus now we're starting to get a little bit more proactive, we're starting to get a little bit ahead of the game. So option D is everything previously, plus maybe two to three years ahead of need versus want, I would say. Meaning, right now, those things and that specific option may be more of a want, but in two to three years, they're going to turn into a need. Option E is, goes, again, goes beyond that, and this is where we do some things like funding some of the partner contributions, OCA Media had some needs that we included in our list, Oregon News Center as well. This is also starting to game out to, you know, we're talking maybe four to six years in the future for addressing needs. It also does some things to address some of the maybe new priorities that we're starting to get into. So if option D and previously is just maintaining all of our current services, option E starts to add in, you know, and, and beyond, starts to add in things like a sustainability position, a grants position, a, a marketing or communications position, things that we're not currently doing, but we know that there's interest to do those things, that's where we start to finally get to the point where we've addressed all of our existing services, now we can think about, hey, there's some other things that we'd like to do as well, an IT position is also in there. So that's E. F is doing the same, something similar there, but now we're talking five to eight years out, and then option G is, we're talking, you know, upwards of a decade out. And there's a couple of things that we cha- I changed to the needs from what you saw in, in July compared to what's in the report now. First, a couple, two of them are relatively straightforward, we had some needs in there for like a recreation department, you know, starting one of those up, a couple of staff members, some operational funding. You know, looking at that, in, in my opinion, we don't even know what that really looks like right now. Even if we had the money, would it actually, would we actually be able to use it, or would we want it to use it in the way that we think we might use it? We just don't have enough information really to even know where we're going to go at this point with something like that, or even if we want to go there at all. And so I, I did take that out because it, it would almost be beyond G at this point, and to me, it just doesn't make sense to, to ask for something that we're not really sure of at all. There was another need in there too for addressing, replacing franchise fee revenue. So cable franchise fees, they are money that we receive from cable companies like Charter and TDS, who, from their subscribers, there's some funds are passed along, there's sort of a state regulatory environment involved for these franchise fees now, but we do get, you know, around a hundred and some thousand dollars in funding, and a lot of that is passed along to OCA Media for their funding contribution. There's a little uncertainty as to the future viability of that revenue source, just from a economic standpoint in terms of subscribers to those, those things, but also the state has entered that framework more and more and has started to reduce those and replace them with a different kind of funding scheme that may or may not be at the level of revenue that we receive right now. But that is still fairly speculative, I mean, it may be that, it may be ten years out before we really have an issue or more, or the, the scheme that the state comes up with does actually replace the revenue along the way. It's just, at this point, we just don't know, and I think to include it right now is a little bit too far speculative. Again, it'd be something that would be maybe something falling out of that G option. So I took that one out, and then the other one, which I think is probably more of interest and, and consequential, is I did take out the Oregon Fire EMS district needs that were submitted, and there's a couple of reasons for that. They had, I think, maybe half a dozen positions for needs that they had identified in, in the needs assessment that we did. Two reasons, so number one, obviously, it's a district, so we are just one partner of the four communities, so we don't have unilateral control in deciding when and how those needs will be funded. So it didn't make sense to me that we would ask residents to fund those things when potentially, we don't even know when they may happen, or they may happen and they may look very differently. And so now we have, we've asked for this revenue that maybe we don't need for a long time or need at all. And then the second, and probably maybe the more consequential piece of this, is, as we've talked about, there is a funding tool within the levy limits that provides an exception to joint fire and joint EMS districts. Of course, we've talked about that this year, and we hope to use that this year. But essentially, these types of services have the ability to raise additional funds in property taxes that go beyond the, the normal levy limit to address their needs. And so that's actually what we're doing this year, hopefully, we're going to add full-time firefighter and paramedic and add more funding for their existing staff wages. So to me, it, it doesn't make sense that we would fill up a potential referendum with these dollars that we actually could likely get from a different source, and then take that capacity away from village services that don't have that tool, don't have that option. So that was another decision to, to remove those. So next steps, as we've talked about, we're, we're still on the same timeline that we reviewed earlier this summer, and, and Scott's going to come up, I think, to talk about the community survey, if you have any questions about that. But hopefully, in October, we're going to get that survey out, it's going to go out to every single residential address, a paper copy, who will, which will try to encapsulate all, everything I just said and everything in that report into about one to two pages, but then also provide a link so people can find that report and, and more information if they want to go seek it out. So that survey will go out in October, be back, planned to be back mid-November, and then in December, Community Perceptions will be back, and they'll give a report on the results that were found for that survey. And I think before I, I just have Scott come up, this was one thing that was added on here that I'll mention, we've talked about this in the past, about how the village of Oregon is a very residential-centric assessed value. So a lot of the, the value in our community is comprised of residential, and of course, residents, people create demand on services in a way that is more burdensome than, say, a commercial or industrial development, whether it's police calls or people walking into the library or senior center. One of the things that, statistics that we found, and pieces of data that we found through this process was, that is very, very true, it's not just an anecdote, it is very true, about eighty-seven-point-six percent of our value is residential, and of the twenty-eight cities and villages in Dane County, I believe we are number five on that list for the proportion of residential comprising as a percentage of the total assessed value. And the four or five communities that are in front of us, very small communities, you know, the communities that are two thousand, three thousand population, where they are just really houses, they don't really have any businesses to speak of. So in terms of communities in Dane County, we absolutely are drawing our taxes from, and having demand on us from a very huge residential base, and of course, that creates challenges from just burden of taxing, but then challenges of service demand on the organization. So I'm happy to answer any questions on, I guess, the report that was generated and the work that's been done. Again, I don't think there's anything too crazy surprising to the board here, maybe just captures in a more explicit and, and comprehensive way. And then if there's, once we're done with any questions, we can have Scott come up and talk about the survey.
Okay, I have two questions. One is just clarifying that the costs of each of the different options were, to get the cost of D, you're not adding A, B, C, and D, it's, that's the full amount, the seven-seventeen would be what that option would cost in full, right?
So I'll go to the report here, so option D, let's just use that as an example, so option D includes everything in A, B, and C.
And the cost.
And the cost, yep, plus what's being added under D. So to do A, B, C, and D would cost seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents on the median value. So to do A, B, C, and D would cost $717.51 on the median value.
Okay. And then my second question is, if and when the referendum appears on the ballot, is it likely to be multiple options? Or is it likely we're going to pick one of these and put that on the ballot and say, this is what we think we want to do? And yes or no?
Yeah, we'll we'll pick one that we want to do. And and I think Scott actually will talk a little bit about some some thought process behind the survey to begin with in terms of why, number one, on the survey, you can get good data from just asking a direct question of, here's what we really need and here's what we want. What do you think about it? Just tell us yes or no, rather than kind of giving people multiple options to. You know, as I I think Scott mentioned to me in a call last week, people tend to gravitate to the lowest cost, no matter what, right? Even if it's doesn't really meet what we really need. Or if you give them multiple options in terms of, like on a survey, you know, what do you think about public safety? What do you think about public works? What do you think about parks? Once you get that data back and people have prioritized those things, it's somewhat difficult to try to then craft a referendum question around that data. And I know some of the communities in Dane County kind of took those different approaches. The community that just asked the direct question of, do you, would you agree with this plan or not? Was very satisfied with the information they got of it because they just got the straight answer. And the community that kind of was a little bit more, here's some multiple choices, here's some different services to prioritize. They weren't exactly satisfied with the information they got back. Because once they had to actually go back and craft that question for the referendum, it was really hard to put all those different pieces together to see where they could get enough support.
Colonel Lynn.
Thank you for this very comprehensive presentation and the report that we have that kind of goes through it all. It's very helpful, I think, for us to see what all the options could be. And in particular, for some of us who felt pretty strongly about the wheel tax and the streetlight levy to, or fee, I should say, being included. So I appreciate all of that and all of your, like, this is what we need and this is what we want and the projecting out. And I just want to state again, I mean, I'm a broken record on this. This is, this board and and previous boards have not been throwing money down holes just to spend it. There's been a lot of consternation about how money is spent to make sure that we are doing things as efficiently and effectively as possible. And when you compare us with other communities, you can certainly see that. I will state again for the record that the legislature can help fix this problem by changing the property tax formula to make it more reflective of what communities need. And also by changing their shared revenue formula to something that's not just to throw something at a problem once and put all kinds of parameters on it. There are ways to go about this. And I'm, I think that we do need this referendum. And I am hopeful that in a new legislative session in a biannual budget year that these will be things that the legislature talks about. And certainly, last week's Eller's presentation alluded to that need as well. So crossing our fingers, but also pressuring our legislators.
Lynn, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight just a couple of things that you said, Martin, because kind of along the lines of what we've been talking about, I think what will, what people will gravitate towards is looking at, you know, our A, B, C options. But I do think that some of the background information that you've given is important for the public to be aware of. First, that basic calculation of the standalone option essentially being about the same at the end of the day, if you own two cars and you, you know, pay the streetlight fee, which you need to do. So I think that's important for people to remember. I also think, I really appreciate you taking some things off the table for us. As a board member, I'm trying to know as much as I can, but you know better than I about, you know, if we get this money, are we able to utilize it in the very most responsible way? And acknowledging that we're just not there yet, I think, is a really courageous thing to do and very transparent to say, we're just not where we need to be to utilize this money as responsibly as we want our residents to give it. And so I would just really highlight that. I think sometimes it looks as if we're trying to throw everything we can possibly get into this basket. But we are trying to be, with the help of village staff, which I genuinely appreciate the work you've all done, trying to be as responsible in this ask as possible. And that we would all wish that it could be smaller and lower in number, but that it's not. And so if we look at it in that responsible viewpoint, we can make some of the best decisions possible. So I just wanted to applaud that work and and thank you for doing that on our behalf in preparation for this ask.
I guess the the biggest thing I I took away from this is just the amount of amazing work that was into this in an incredibly short time span. We we were, you know, sort of faced with this suddenly in April and May. I'm like, maybe we should, you know, we're going to have to do something. And just to to pull this together and to have this kind of level of detail in that short amount of time is, it's it's an amazing work, not only at the consultants that we we brought into this, but also the staff and everybody who contributed a lot of pieces and a lot of parts to this, and and it is amazing. You know, the the A through G and then then what about the rev, the wheel tax? There's, that's just a lot of different options and so forth. And I see in the survey, then you break it down to a, an even finer, simpler kind of presentation. Here's the base, here's the short, here's the long, what about the wheel tax? And I think that was a a very smart thing to do. Yeah, it gets down to the the way the survey is laid out right now, five or six questions total. And they they can rank them within that. In a way, this is sort of replacing to me what, you know, we putting on a ballot, here's, you know, 50 different options and try to to do something with it. And we're doing it within a survey context and we'll be able to build that back. And really, this is what the community has told us and this is what what we're going to. It's not that we will not be faced with challenges after this survey is done. If they only approve the base plan, that means that in two years, we're going to be right back here in the same place again. And, you know, I think that's not entirely clear on how far some of the, each one of these little steps go and what happens then. And I don't see that in this this document because, yes, it means that, you know, your property taxes will be increased X number of dollars, but it doesn't really come through that, oh, and then we're going to have to come back again or find some other alternative or some other revenue source again. So that that doesn't necessarily come through on some of this. I do, I firmly believe this is, this is taking the right path and asking people what they want to do and let them know that, you know, they're going to have to make some choices. We have to make some choices as a community. And it's not the village board that's making these choices. We're asking individuals in their homes to make these choices. And I think that's, that's the only way we really can proceed with this on an honest basis. So again, condemnation, condemnna-
Commendation.
The good one. To those who worked on this project, it it is, it is a tremendous amount of work and I I applaud you for your efforts. So thank you very much.
Amanda, please.
Yes, I echo all the things that were previously said. And I'd also like to point out that if for any, particularly for any public members that are watching, that some of the positions that we are asking people to create, like a grants administrator, you know, if we're asking people to pay for that position, there's an upfront cost. But recognize that also that will free us up to get more grant money in. And it may end up paying for part or all of that person's position down the road and freeing up more staff time to look into a business park where we could get more businesses in town that would help distribute the tax burden. I mean, there are, we get returns back. I mean, yeah, we're doing an upfront, asking for money to hire these positions. But in the long run, I, there are positions that will help your taxes be lessened potentially. So something to consider.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I guess we could have Scott come up.
Yeah.
Should I bring the survey up on my computer?
I I got it up here ready for you.
All right, thank you all. As Martin said, I'm Scott Gerard with Community Perceptions. I had the pleasure of working with Martin and the Mueller Communications team on this survey draft. Before we start going through it, I just want to preface it with a few things as as Martin teased to and as a couple of you spoke about. This is much less detailed than what's in that full options assessment. That options assessment is so wonderful to have. Folks love to explore and find more information. But if they get a 30-pound thing in the mail, it's going right in the recycling can. And so we have done a lot of these surveys and our research has shown that for every hundred or so extra words, you lose 1% of response rate. And so we're really thoughtful about every word that goes in here. And so, you know, if you're thinking, oh, I wish that was in there and that, you know, we can certainly still make some of those adjustments, but the trade-off is you'll get a few less responses. And so that's sort of the process we go through when we're thinking about what to include. So as Martin said, this will be mailed to every residence in the village. We'll also provide some additional paper copies to Village Hall in case folks want to request an additional for an additional member of their household or anything like that. The surveys, we're under the link there, and then we'll go through the copy at the top. But there will be a unique code on every single survey that gets sent out to ensure folks can only take it a single time. We'll also give additional codes to the village so if folks want to call again for another member of their household, they can get an additional code and have someone else take it. So now we'll get into the story we're telling and sharing with folks. So this front page is very high level. You know, this is something that they're going to get in the mail and start reading it. And we got to make sure they want to know more, learn more, and then give you their thoughts on it. So the Village of Oregon needs your input. State laws limit our funding, which have, which has not kept up with the increase in cost to provide services such as public safety, public works, libraries, and senior centers. In addition, our community continues to grow and demand for these services has increased. So sort of summarizing that three-pronged piece that Martin presented earlier. As your elected officials, we have identified potential solutions to address these challenges. Because these could affect local property taxes, we must understand the priorities of our community. That sentence is pretty key. When someone reads that it might affect their property taxes, they're much more likely to turn that page and see what it is you're talking about. So then we remind folks that the survey feedback is kept confidential and that it's returned to us. That box again is information on how to take the survey. They can both do it online or they can actually, you know, sit down with a cup of coffee at their table, fill it out with a pen or pencil and mail it in, and we'll enter that data. Right now, we have a survey deadline of November 11th. The bottom text here is just some more information about additional needs that folks have and reminding that survey results will be reported at a later date. And then that's signed by you all as the village board members. So on page two, we get into some of that background and the challenges that the village is facing. And so again, we summed it up in three ways here. So the first one is that increased demand. The Village of Oregon's population has more than doubled since 1993. Over the past 10 years alone, we grew by 28%. Projections estimate an additional 43% growth by 2045. While we are pleased that people continue to choose to live in the Village of Oregon, this much population growth increases demand on services. We go over some of those services again that affect folks in different ways. Demand for village services is beyond what we can provide with our current staffing levels. This problem will continue to worsen as growth continues and that graph that really illustrates that. The second piece is below average compensation. How many, the village has approximately 69 full-time equivalent employees across eight departments. A recent third-party study, so, you know, again, reinforced this wasn't just the village saying this or making up numbers, showed that compensation for half of these employees is below the market rate for similar positions in comparable communities. And then finally, a lack of funding. So tax rates are among the lowest in Dane County. Again, a graph to illustrate how you compare. As a result, the village's revenue has not kept up with increasing costs for supplies, services, utilities, compensation, and equipment. Without an increase in revenue, the village will have to consider cuts to programs or services in the next 12 to 18 months. And now, the other piece of that is right on the next page. And and so you know, this will be a sort of packet. So pages two and three, when someone gets this in the mail, will be facing each other. So they'll see all of this sort of together on the page. So we explain state law limits how much money we are allowed to raise through property taxes to fund ongoing operational expenses. In recent years, these increases have not kept up with rising costs, illustrated with that graph. Then below that, the primary way to increase funding for the Village of Oregon is if voters approve an operational referendum. And then finally, we explain to folks, Oregon is not unique in this. Over the last 10 years, voters in more than 75 municipalities have approved an operational referendum. So then we do get to the options. And as was mentioned, we've sort of combined some of those options that are in the other document. And I'll take a moment to talk through the strategy at this point. So we do have three sort of just up or down questions. We explain sort of what the package includes. And then we ask folks, would you support this referendum? Here's how it would impact your taxes. I I did actually do an initial draft with options A through G, and it was so many questions. And I do this every day and it was so many questions. And so thinking about an average taxpayer, you know, who has to get the kids to practice, has going from work to whatever, seeing that many questions on there, they're just not going to answer them all. And then you're losing data and that hurts the usefulness of the data. And so we did work really hard to sort of figure out, well, A through C, you know, that option C got you to a maintaining current service level. So that feels like a really logical thing to package together. Next, we've got that midterm level and that seems like a really natural thing to put together for that three to six years. And then the final plan is the decade. And so those just became logical conclusions. I think it's still good to have more options in that options document. And I think what that will allow you to do is, if you get, let's say, you hear you're right around 50% or slightly below on the middle option on the survey, well, maybe you, you know, go to only the half of that as it's broken down in those additional options. So I think you'll still have usefulness with those really broken down options, even though we on the survey kind of consolidated them here. We did, to Martin's point, we also considered an approach where you sort of say, community, what do you prioritize most? Public safety, library, senior center, things like that? One thing you find is people prioritize a lot of things. And so what you end up finding is a lot of those scores are high and it becomes hard to delineate. I think also it can be hard to tie those priorities to exact positions. And finally, your staff has done a really fantastic job, I think, of prioritizing these things already and determining what these needs are. And I think you want to, you know, respect that work and honor that work versus, what if the community comes back and is prioritizing things that your staff said was low priority, but they're only willing to fund a certain amount? Well, now you're in a a bind and you have to decide between those things. And that's a challenging position to be in. So I think because of the great work your staff has done in prioritizing a lot of these things, you're well-placed to ask some very direct questions of your community that you'll get really useful data back on. And we certainly do this approach and and it's very useful data that you'll get back. I think very clear on what folks would support and what they wouldn't. So back to what's in the survey. On the base plan, we explain village department leaders prioritize their short and long-term needs to meet current and future service demands. The village developed a base plan that would allow us to maintain existing services at current levels. This includes investments in public safety, library programming, employee compensation, and facility maintenance. The base plan would allow us to add. Then we go through the positions that are included in those options A through C. We also mentioned converting some positions to full-time and increasing hours. We say the cost and we ask, would you support a $2.3 million referendum to pay for the base plan? We do break down the taxes just by that $100,000 of property value. That makes it easy for folks to do the math for their own property versus if we put only- That makes it easy for folks to do the math for their own property, uh, versus if we put only the median in there. Folks are gonna say, well, I'm slightly below. How does, and that's more math than a hundred thousand. It's very clean. Um, so again, we want to make it as easy for folks to go through. Then we do ask after this first base plan option, if you would not support the referendum, what are the main reasons? And is there any other information you would need before making a decision? So then on the next page, we get to additional funding for the short term. Uh, if the community supports the base plan, we could further expand the referendum to maintain services for the next three to six years. This level of funding would allow the village to pay for the base plan while also providing funding to maintain library systems, support police department IT programs, contribute to operations at OCA Media in the Oregon Youth Center, and further implement the competitive employee compensation plan. This funding would allow us to add, and again, we go through, uh, the positions that are included in options D and E, and explain that some other positions would be converted from part-time to full-time. The cost of that plan is three-point-nine, and we do the math, uh, to the point, I think someone asked about the cumulative-ness of the projects. And, and so we try to be really clear that the base plan is two-point-three million. The additional funding, short-term, one-point-six, that's how you get the total of that three-point-nine. And then we ask the same question, would you support this referendum to pay for short-term funding needs? And we have a five-point scale, definitely yes, probably yes, undecided, probably no, and definitely no. And then the final option is additional funding for the long-term. If the community supports additional funding to meet short-term needs, we could further expand the referendum to improve service quality and meet funding needs for the next decade. This level of funding would allow the village to pay for projects in the other plans while also providing funding to further implement the competitive employee compensation plan, fund staff positions at OCA Media, and the Oregon Youth Center. This funding would allow us to add, go through that same list. Um, I just noticed on here, we don't have the little, uh, total cost here like we did on the others, so I'm gonna make a note to add that in. I apologize. Um, but we'll go through what positions we're converting from part-time to full-time, explain that cost summary again, and then ask, would you support a six-point-one million dollar referendum to pay for long-term service needs? And then finally, um, the last big question we ask is we go through those other funding sources. And so this is where we get into, um, the wheel tax and the streetlight charge. So we explain that the village recently implemented these other options and explain the background, what the wheel tax does, what the streetlight, uh, charge does, and how much revenue you get from those. Then we acknowledge while these solutions have delivered additional short-term revenue, they are not adequate to address the needs of the village in the years ahead. The village could add four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars to a referendum to replace this revenue and eliminate both the wheel tax and streetlight charge. And then we ask, would you support an additional four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand in a referendum to replace the wheel tax and streetlight charge fee? Um, and we're careful to use that additional wording here because, uh, it's, we can't have a total because it would depend on which of the previous options they supported. And so, uh, just trying to be clear with folks that this would be on top of whatever other option might have support. Same scale, so then we get some respondent information. Uh, this just helps you break down and disaggregate the data, and you can look at, um, who was responding and how different segments of your community responded. The important question here is, is your primary residence in the Village of Oregon? Uh, you know, some people may live part-time here, part-time somewhere else, maybe a business owner takes the survey who lives outside of the village. That means they won't be able to vote. We still want to hear from them. Their opinion is certainly valuable, but they won't be able to vote on a referendum unless their primary residence is here. And so, uh, when we're predicting a referendum outcome, we need to know, uh, we can disaggregate for just those primary residents. Renter homeowner, again, for some, uh, disaggregation data. Uh, we do ask a how do you like to receive village information question? A lot of folks find that useful as if they end up pursuing a referendum. Uh, where are folks going for information from the village? Where can you communicate with them? And, um, even if it's not information about a referendum, other information, what ways do folks like to engage with village information? And then, uh, on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend the village to a friend or family member? Uh, a, a lot of times that sort of question can correlate with a referendum's passage. Um, folks who are happy with where they're living, uh, tend to be more supportive of the services that are being asked. And then the final page, uh, is just the mailer. That's the post office's domain for the most part. Um, but in case it arrives with this side up in someone's mailbox, we do say important village survey enclosed and, and the deadline there. Um, but that big blank space at the top of the page, uh, is for the post office addressing all of these to your residents. So that's the survey.
Questions, oh, boy, yeah. Let's start, start at the end there, Jason, and then probably work down.
Three quick questions.
Okay.
I think they're quick. First of all, just want to clarify, um, so in my house, we have, uh, three adults of voting age. Um, one of us could use the paper survey, but the other two of us would have to contact the village for a code, whether it's QR or a link. Is that correct?
Great question. So, uh, you will get one survey for your household. One of you could fill out the paper survey and another could use the code on the paper survey to fill it up, out online. But you would, if you wanted the third person to fill it out, have to contact the village for an additional code. The reason we do that is the residents, the addresses are pretty constant and safe. The number of people living in a given household who are eligible to vote is not constant at all or reliable. Um, and so one per household with a way to get more is a much more reliable way to reach everyone than trying to, you know, if there's a multi-generational household or things like that, that's not necessarily tracked in, uh, the mailing list that we have access to. And so, um, that's why we do that, but yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought I heard. I just wanted to clarify. Uh, second of all, what do you see for response rate in doing this?
Yeah, it, our average is in the mid to high teens, I would say. It's been a little higher this spring and summer, but it, it, I, I'm curious how the fall election will impact it. I really don't know. Um, but in the mid-teens, we feel very confident in the data once we surpass ten percent, um, response rate, so.
Then my last question is, um, I, I work with numbers and I find people prefer to do as little math as possible to apply to their lives. And that's me including, I work with numbers. Is there any benefit to, so I don't know what I spend yearly on anything?
Sure.
Is there any benefit to putting, uh, in parentheses or something, a month, monthly versus yearly, or what has your experience been with that?
We do that in some places. I think some people find it useful. Some people say, well, I don't pay my property taxes monthly. I pay them yearly, so you're trying to pull one over on me. It, it depends. You know, it, it really depends how it's received. It varies by community. Um, it's something we've done in a few places, and I, I would say the majority of our surveys, we don't, but we have in a few places. So we could, um, but you just want to be ready to explain why you presented it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, I think Lynn had.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. My first question is, um, on the informational page two. All of this makes a ton of sense to me. The one sentence that made me cringe was in the middle of the second page. It says, "Demand for village services is beyond what we can provide with our current staffing levels." My only concern here is, does this make it seem as if we cannot, we are making it work with what we have? I'm nervous when we're talking about public safety specifically. I do not want the impression of a ser, of a village resident taking the survey to believe that we are not in a safe, that our police department isn't providing hi, the highest quality of, of service, which they are. We're just doing it in a way we don't really like to do. Does that, am I making any sense? Did this make a sentence, does the sentence make you cringe in any way, or is this just my personal reaction?
I didn't see it that way, no.
Okay.
But that's me. I mean, there's five more people here.
But aren't there, aren't there a lot of calls where you want two officers and don't have them, right now?
So I, I think this is a great question. And if, so if a community member were to approach me and say, I read this, are you telling me that the police department can't provide good services? I would say we are right now, but the amount of overtime our officers are working, uh, it's very risky to their safety and also the community. So I would, I would say that unfortunately, this is an accurate statement, but if they were to approach me, I could explain further.
Okay. I didn't know if it was worth adding something in there about, you know, we can't provide it without causing great risk to our, our staff or services. But if, if you feel as if you can answer this, then I'll calm down on it.
I, I would, uh, if I may, uh, I want to figure maybe just, you're the expert, so I'll read this to you. You tell me what, "Demand for village's services is approaching beyond what we can provide." So that,
Yeah.
it doesn't sound like, as Lynn, it makes a good point, we're on the brink. But something's gotta give.
Yeah, we can, uh, we can find a little language to put in there, whether it's approaching capacity or at capacity or, uh, beyond what we can provide with our current staffing levels without overtime or things like that. Great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Good job, wordsmith.
Without significant overtime.
Okay, and then the last two things that I have, um, actually three, are in the respondent information. Um, on this scale of zero to ten, do, I was really surprised about this because to me, this is not a question that feels applicable, but you do find that it does correlate to support.
There's some correlation between the amount of responses at the top and referendum support.
Okay. Going back, sorry, I went out of turn. Question above that, how do you like to receive village information? I'm wondering if we can phrase that in, how do you receive village information? Because I'm not, I would like to know what they want as far as funding. I don't want to take input as far as like, do we need to have more newsletters? Do we need to have, like, we know we need more of that stuff. Is that picky?
No, that it's, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. We actually do the do you like to receive wording pretty purposefully because what it allows for is if you're not putting energy into something right now, maybe you want to if you see a high response rate for something like that.
Okay.
Um, so we do do the, the like wording purposely because it, uh, I think it's data on where people want to get information versus how they do.
How they actually are. Okay, fair point. Thank you. And then my last piece, sorry, is really fast. As a former teacher, I'm wondering if we can put the deadline at the very bottom of this page.
This page as well.
Children, high schoolers that I taught, never understood deadlines very well. And as a busy person, I often would forget by the time I get to this page. And I want to make sure that people who send it in post-November eleventh know that they are not a part of the data that we're collecting.
Sure thing. And, and we can add that. I will say also, if folks send it in, so because of how the postal service works, we will get surveys after November eleventh. That's part of why we have, uh, that time between the eleventh and the December presentation.
Okay.
So, you know, if someone sends it in on the twelfth, we'll probably be able to. I don't want anyone to think.
Thank you.
Uh, their data won't count, but I very much take your point.
Thank you.
I love deadlines as well.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Carly, you're next.
Uh, yes, I have a suggestion for the graph on mil rates.
Okay.
And that's just to make the name Oregon orange and bold it. So it, it stands out among those white ones at the bottom, kind of the opposite of the top, so people can see that those two go together. And then I'm wondering, so if I were to, eh, to say definitely yes on question one, and definitely yes on additional short-term, and definitely yes. You know, if I just do definitely yes all the way down, then I'm clearly affirmative on everything. What happened, I mean, I'm sure that you get all, things that are all across the board. Like, maybe somebody would say definitely no on base plan, but they'd say definitely yes on something else. And, eh, so I'm assuming that the definitely, the most definitely yes one is the thing that you, that you disaggregate in your data.
And we're able to disaggregate like where support falls off or, you know, how did people who said no to this one say to the other one? Um, and so we're able to disaggregate through all that. Generally, your highest support will be that base plan level. It'll, you know, decrease at the middle level and decrease further for, for the highest level. Um, that's the general pattern. Uh, there might be some individual answers within that that follow the pattern you outlined. But, um, we just look at the total support number most basically and then can disaggregate further if necessary, if you're on the line with something or anything like that.
Thank you.
Amanda.
Yeah, um, so the one thing that stuck out to me, uh, I, I think this is great, by the way. But the one thing that stuck out to me is there isn't a local place for people to drop the survey off. They mail it to Slinger, Wisconsin. Or, but I'm worried that one, that village staff might get people showing up, handing it to them, like, oh, I came to turn in my survey. And two, is there a way we could have a place for people to drop them here, for example, and then we get them to Slinger or whatever? Yeah. Yeah, just.
We've had arrangements with, uh, municipalities and schools where folks can drop them off and then they'll batch mail them. You know, maybe once at the end of every week or something like that, or they wait till the deadline or whatever it may be. So we could certainly add a line in here. I, I think the consideration there is village staff's capacity to accept those and, you know, have those interactions. And so that's up to you all, but that's certainly an option on our end.
I mean, does that make sense to, to you guys to have an option for people to drop?
Yeah, if that's practical.
I wouldn't be surprised if they wound up in the Dropbox for utility bills. We should at least have a plan for dealing with that.
Yeah. There is. Yep, it's prepaid.
I think maybe that was, that was, did you say that you're sending out a prepaid envelope with it?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, can you give me an idea, uh, from history, uh, your experience, uh, percentage of mail versus online?
It's a great question. I would say generally, online is seventy to eighty percent of responses. Um, and twenty to thirty mailed, but it can vary as high as, you know, five percent mailed or whatever, so.
Okay. Actually, very good questions and comments and covered everything I had and at least even got my last one.
Um, do we have any sense of what percentage of village residents rent versus own their home? Do we know that info?
I think per the, uh, the last housing study that I did, I think it's, um, like thirty, seventy, so seventy percent owner, occupy, thirty percent rental. I might be a little bit off, but it's somewhere in that range.
I'm, I'm just wondering if we need to do anything to help renters know how this might affect them. I mean, presumably it impacts your rental rate long-term. But also, we might be just chasing our tail on that too. Do you have any experience with that?
We tend not to, only because there's really no way. The village has no control over how that impacts an individual renter, right? Because a property owner is going to choose how to, what they pass along to their renters, and so you can't put a number on it. And it's, it's, it's a, just a, a real challenge to, I guess, explain how it's gonna impact them in a way that I, I don't know that it's useful.
Okay.
Someone else? Lynn?
I just had a quick question about questions around the survey. How would, if someone were taking the survey and they want further information, also because of this Dropbox, you had mentioned kind of the capacity of village staff. How much are we expecting, like, I don't want this to tie up an excessive amount of time where people are dropping in and wanting to talk to village staff for a long period of time and you can't anticipate that to happen? Do you find that you get a lot of questions? Okay.
No, not a lot of questions. One thing that we haven't added yet that we can is a, a link to the full options assessment.
Okay.
Um, that hasn't been live yet, so we didn't have that in here. But a lot of times people like to know they can get more information.
Yes.
Not as many actually go get that information.
Such is life.
We're all busy, you know, and so, but they like to know that you've done the work and that information is out there and put together. So we can add that link in there and then folks who are interested can go click it and, and seek it out.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Amanda, thank you, and Jason.
Okay, yeah, I just realized, um, wha, what kind of response rate do you typically get for a municipality, you know, with this, uh? Was it? I missed that. I apologize.
In the mid-teens usually, and we're confident in our data once we're above ten percent.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did I miss you, Carly? Did you have your hand up?
I did, and now I forgot.
Oh, no, this was a question for Martin. Um, so I'm hopeful that you will write something for the Oregon Observer and tell them that this has gone live on the website and explains what's gonna happen, 'cause.
So we, uh, as part of our, um, contract with Mueller, we have like a whole PR blitz set for tomorrow, actually, assuming we're. So there'll be a press release that gets issued, uh, by Mueller. And then, um, Candy was just working on the website as we speak. There's gonna be a portion of the website that will be, that will contain all of this information. It'll actually be a button on the front page of the website. So, and the report will be uploaded. So, and the report will be uploaded, so there'll be a whole kind of blitz around all of this. And Mueller will have kind of a communication strategy as we go through this whole process.
Okay, Jason, you're next.
A question for you, I am one who uses too many words instead of too few, so I don't know how many people actually get through my mailings ever. But the one thing that I know is in Martin's presentation that I'm guessing, like you said, a lot of people won't go back to, is that the construction projects really don't impact this part. Is it worthwhile to, lack of funding, to include a sentence, or is it more confusing? And I'm asking everybody else too. Building projects do not affect operational costs.
So we have this information in the full report.
Right, and I was just wondering, because I don't know how many people are going to actually look at that. And municipal funding is very confusing, sorry I cut you off.
I guess my inkling is because we're not talking about a building project in here, I wouldn't wanna, I worry that trying to mention it in a sentence sets someone's mind on, oh, what building projects are they doing? That they're not, it opens a direction that isn't what we're testing or what you all are considering. So that would be my advice, I think, would be to not include them.
Okay.
Carleen?
The one thing that just occurred to me is that Fire EMS was taken out of any of those options. And it is mentioned in the description of the survey, I wonder if.
We talked about that briefly, it is in the cover letter. My thought was that those services still do have increasing costs, even if you're not necessarily adding positions through the survey, they are a factor. The fact that they're increasing will state law limits funding is still pretty related to your needs. So I think it's okay to have up there, was my thought, certainly open to adjusting if you all feel differently, but.
Anybody else? Well, okay, I guess we can proceed on a motion on this, or something you want to add, Martin?
Yeah, we would be looking for a motion to accept the report and then authorize us to proceed with the community survey, make a couple of adjustments that have been discussed, and any other last-minute stuff.
Jason and Tom, assuming that was a motion, a second?
Yes.
That's my hand. Okay, further discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Very helpful.
Okay, item eight B, resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-four capital improvement plan and twenty twenty-four financial management plan update. This has been in our packet over several meetings. Anything to add tonight, Martin?
Nothing else to add, and as you said, it's been on for the last few meetings, and we'd like to have the board approve that plan.
All right, we're looking for a motion for that, Tim and Carleen, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you. Item nine, new business centers for discussion and/or possible action, a preliminary annual budget information for twenty twenty-five.
I'll keep this brief. I'll talk a lot at the next meeting. So I think every year, since I've been here the last three years, I've put this little budget primer together ahead of our first budget meeting, which will be in the next meeting on October seventh. And it just covers a lot of background on the budget process, why we do things the way that we do, the different laws, policies that we have, fund types, explains what all the different funds are. Talks about just sort of the overall management process in general. Again, important laws, important numbers, numbers related to employee costs, and then just some good rules of thumb as the board thinks about the budget. I had a mention in my memo about the current budget, we've started to get that pulled together. I think I had a comment in there that there was, at least as recent as last Wednesday, there was a little bit of a deficit in the draft budget, but actually, it's really is this morning, we have solved that, so we are balanced currently. But we still have a couple outstanding things, general transportation aids, we don't know until October. And then open enrollment for insurances also happens in October, so that can sway things a little bit too. So usually mid-September, it's just a hair early, there's always random stuff that kind of comes up here over the next three or four weeks. But things look very good right now. I think all the departments were very responsive to the direction from earlier this year on trying to keep things steady. And there was also a couple of things that transpired that we didn't expect that really helped out from a numbers game. Maybe not necessarily from an operations game being a benefit, but the numbers are coming in good, and as I said, we're currently balanced in the draft, but we'll see where the next month takes us.
Okay, questions or comments, Martin? Hearing none, thank you. Item ten, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants, this is for information only. No action by the village board overtaken, see reports in the meeting packet. A, the village administrator report. And B, the finance director report, annual building permits, impact fees and connection fees collected for the month ended August twenty twenty-four. Questions or Lisa? Okay, moving on. Item eleven, announcements and miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action. Anyone? Amanda?
South Main Street is gorgeous. It's so smooth, I love it. Thank you for doing a good job overseeing it, I appreciate it.
Lynn?
Just because of timing, I wanted to make note of an event that's not on the September calendar as of right now, maybe we can add it. But on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, a couple of the board members will be at Kickback Cafe from eight to ten thirty for our coffee and connect conversations with board trustees. So especially as we start to have some of these conversations, if you have questions for us as board members or you have a concern or something you'd like to voice to us, we will be there drinking lots of coffee. I think I'll be so jittery by the time I've drank enough coffee for two and a half hours that it might get exciting. But we will be at Kickback from eight to ten thirty on Saturday, September twenty-eighth.
Anybody else for announcements? Nope, okay, eleven B, future agenda items. This item gives village board members the opportunity to place topic on a future agenda for discussion or possible action. Amanda?
So Phil and I received an email from Morgan Sally, who is Congressman Pocan's regional representative or field person, I'm just gonna say, I don't know, official title is escaping me now. But they want, they would like to come and be on the agenda for the ten seven meeting. That's when they can make it, this is very typical, I'm just gonna say it for the public. Elected officials often request to come speak to local boards. And that's just something most boards grant, so any objections?
Sounds good. Someone else, future agenda items? No, item twelve, okay, business is concluded without objection, we are adjourned.